Welcome, everyone. I Council President Walsh called the January 25th Council Study Session and Retreat to Order. Due to the Governor's Park Proclamation 20-28 relating to the COVID-19 emergency and open public meetings, this meeting will be held entirely remotely. There are only two public comment opportunities at tonight's meeting. First, there is a general public comment opportunity at the beginning of the meeting, or you can make your comments after the presentation at the end of the meeting. I would also share a summary of any comments that have been emailed, but we haven't received any. In the meantime, I will now take the roll call of the council members in attendance. Please say "here" when I call your name. Councilmember DeMichelle.
Here.
Deputy Council President Hall.
Here.
Councilmember Hunt.
Here.
Councilmember Joe.
Here.
Councilmember Mart.
Here.
Councilmember Ray.
Here.
Great. The first item on the agenda is public comment. If there's anyone on the call now who'd like to make public comments but did not sign up to speak, please raise your virtual hand. There are several ways to do this. So if you're on the phone, you can press star three. If you've joined by computer or smartphone, you're going to look for a hand icon. It varies where it is by device, but one option may be to go to the participant panel and choose the raise hand icon in the lower right-hand corner. I'll wait for a minute, see if anyone wishes to raise their hand, but I'm not sure if we have any. We might have a public member on the line. Clerk, has anyone signed up to speak or indicated a desire to speak this evening?
No, Council President Walsh, no member of the public has signed up for this evening. I am not seeing a virtual hand raised among the attendees.
Okay, fantastic.
Excuse me, Council President Walsh, I do see one hand raised. So it looks like we do have one person wishing to make comments tonight.
Excellent. Okay. So, citizen comments are an important part of the public process. We take them seriously and factor them into the decisions that we make. Please direct comments to the whole council and not individuals. While this is not a question-and-answer session, we'll contact you to follow up if needed. So when recognized, you'll unmute your microphone, state your name, address, and relationship to the city. Speak clearly and pause frequently. Limit your comments to five minutes and re-mute your microphone when done. If you don't respond after your name or phone number is called, or if your connection is lost unexpectedly, the meeting will need to proceed. So you're encouraged to re-join the meeting if able. Personal attacks, obscene language, derogatory remarks, and disruptive behavior will not be permitted. So Clerk, can you identify the first person who has indicated a desire to speak?
Yes, it looks, I believe it might be Connie Marsh. I see the initial CM. And Chris, are you able to see CM on your list of attendees?
I see CM, but I don't see a hand raised.
Okay, could you elevate CM as a panelist?
Can do that.
Thank you.
Ms. Marsh, you are now a panelist and can speak.
Well, I am trying, ah, there we go, video. My name's Connie Marsh. I live on Squawk Mountain. And I guess I have been following the city council for a little bit over 20 years. So as councils come and go, the community stays. And so as I have watched this particular council through the last, I guess I'm going to call it year, maybe two years with COVID, what has been of most concern to me is the council seems to be working less toward the community will and more toward their own personal perspective. And I would like to state that I think a great council member is representing their community at large first, and then weighing in on their knowledge base. One of the reasons I don't want to run for council is I would feel that I would have to lose my own personal advocacy point of view, and it would instead be my duty to represent the community voice. And I don't see that in the city council at this point. I don't know if it has not been presented as a, as the goal of good government, but if I would ask one thing of you all, it would be to take to heart the community first instead of your own political point of view. Because I see decisions being made that I don't feel represent the community at large. I might agree with them, but I don't think the community even knows what you're talking about or even knows what's happening, and that's very scary to me. So tonight, as you discuss how you want to deal with each other, I think an even more important conversation is how you feel that you can respect the community at large and how you can work towards strengthening that link. So I appreciate the ability to come to a retreat and have that conversation, and thank you for seeing me. I raised my hand a couple of times and put it down. And I'm going to listen to see what you all have to say, and I'm hoping for great things. Thank you.
Thank you, Connie. I appreciate you tending with us and your comments. Clerk, has anyone else indicated a desire to speak?
No.
No? Okay, fantastic. Well, I appreciate that. At this point, I normally would summarize community comments. We have not received any emails about this particular subject matter or retreat. But I would like to just make a reminder that written comments can be submitted at any time to citycouncil@isakawa.gov. That goes to all of us. We receive it, we read over it, and we would appreciate any comments that anybody has at any point. And so at this point, going back to what our scheduled agenda is, so after public comment, I'm going to give just a quick introduction and go through what our agenda items are, a little bit of how to use Miro, and then I will turn it over to Deputy Council President Hall for guiding principles and expectations. So just to set the stage, every year we have an annual retreat talking about how we do business together, what's on our work plan, and all of that. This year, we're not able to do that in person. What's my settings? Nope, one second. It doesn't want to recognize me. Okay, we'll get there eventually. There we go. Um, so we usually do that as an in-person retreat. We spend some time talking over things, really working through it. This year, Deputy Council President Hall and I, along with the administration, decided that we were going to be comfortable working in a two-session retreat. The first focused internally on how we work together, how we represent ourselves in our meetings, those types of things. And then the second on our work plan and the things that we were going to cover, as well as a refresher on open government and how we relate and meet in that way. So tonight's meeting, our agenda is a little 10-minute intro, shouldn't take that long, followed by about 20 minutes on our first section of guiding principles and expectations. The third is the weekly leadership meeting, and then we'll take a five-minute break. And then we've left two hours for the council structure and workflow, which is going to be broken down into problem-defining and then problem-solving and brainstorming. I've also got a five-minute break in between those two sessions. So, and then we'll follow it up with good-of-the-order, public comment, and adjournment, and we're hoping to be out of here in less than three hours. So we will take your focus. In the meantime, I am going to present my screen to just take a quick little walkthrough of Miro. So this is like the view that you all should be seeing on your screens. Just a few commentaries here. First, you can potentially hide collaborators' cursors. I'm not sure if you guys have that on there, but if that makes it easier to navigate and walk through. There's a few things to note. These each are called frames. They're the areas where we're going to interact with. In order to interact with the board as a whole, you'll see everything down here in the bottom right that shows the way that you can, what all of the items are on this board. You can use press right-click and drag to move through. You can use a mouse scroll wheel in order to zoom in and out. Or down here in the left, there's a frames section, and you can use that in order to zoom in on a particular frame that we're working with. We've got a few different frames that we're going to interact with today. The first is the expectations version. As the instructions say, you'll find your color below, even though these are not interactable. You will click on the left-hand side with a, to select a sticky note, and then select your color. You will place it down in an area. You can expand it and resize it, and you can type in there. And that will give you a sticky note that we will use in each of these boxes as we're doing a discussion. As we're working through it, Deputy Council President Hall and I may move some of these sticky notes in order to group them by subject, much like we did last year. So that's the first one. Second, the second portion of our meeting we're actually going to do is just a face-to-face discussion. So we don't have anything on the Miro board for that. That's talking over the weekly leadership meetings. The third section, we're also going to do face-to-face while we're talking about our problem definition. And then the clerks are going to use these to list down problems that are being heard from the council members. And after we're done doing our round robin, going through what our problems are, we'll ask you to come in back to Miro and drag three of these onto particular sticky notes to indicate agreement, so that we can kind of come to a conclusion of these are the biggest problems that we're trying to solve with our meeting structure. And then finally, we will probably also do this one face-to-face, but we may come back into the screen and again let the clerks note down what they're hearing from us, depending whether it's useful to look over the list while we're doing that, or if it is more useful to be face-to-face, we will see. So our goal tonight is really to talk over some of these ideas of expectation, so that we come to a sense of, hey, here's what our expectations are in this role with each other, with the council leadership, or of the council leadership and of the administration, then have the conversation on weekly leadership meetings. And then really, I think the big conversation we all want to have is on meeting structure and how we might best work through all of that. So I'm going to stop sharing at this point. And I think at this point, Deputy Council President Hall, it's over to you to talk through our first section on expectations.
Thank you, Council President Walsh. Great introduction. Welcome, everybody. Glad to have you here. This first conversation on guiding principles and expectations is really inspired by the SCA set of group guiding expectations. So hopefully you had a few minutes to kind of look through those in preparing for tonight's meeting. One, the first thing that we want to do is ask all the council members to, any suggested guided expectations or guided principles that you may have thought of in preparation for the meeting, to populate the Miro board with a sticky note with your color. And then after we do that, have a guided conversation, or have a conversation while we kind of sort the ones that are most similar. And then we can have a conversation about, are there any next steps here? Is this something that we want to put more formally into a document, or is this just something we want to strive to for the year 2022? So with that, I just want to ask real quick if anyone has any questions about what's expected of them for this first part. Otherwise, Council President Walsh, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think then we're just going to ask council members to start adding stickies for different guiding principles that you think would fit our council well, for expectations of one another, expectations that you might have of Lindsay and myself, and also expectations of the administration. And that's expectations that we have of the administration, and feel free to also put expectations that the administration or staff might have of us in there as well. So I think we're just going to go silent for three to five minutes while we fill this out, and we'll be back.
And I would encourage everybody, just, you know, put as many of these items down here as you want. If you see somebody having put the same thing down, feel free to add your own take on it, or at least, you know, add a secondary idea, because that'll help us when we're grouping. So for the public watching this, just to give a little bit of a play-by-play, each of the members are putting down a sticky note on each of these boxes, which state expectations for each other, expectations of council leadership, and expectations of the administration. And as we review each of them, we'll read over what has been typed out into each of the sticky notes.
All right, I see people are still playing around. I'm going to go ahead and start kind of grouping some stickies, and then we'll summarize in a few minutes. Thanks, everyone.
How's this looking, everybody? What do you think, Zach? Do you want to start to summarize a little bit?
I think so, yeah. So some of the themes that are coming up a lot in Expectations of Another, we've got a couple that have to do with communication between council members and with the city, I guess, anyone. Check email and phone every day. Two people assume positive intent. Honesty and be kind with others. This person acknowledges public speaking is difficult at times. Yes, it is. Understanding each other's strengths and weaknesses to build, to be better as a council, remain focused on what's in the best interest of the community. Couple here on listening, being open to new ideas, and respecting differences of opinion. We've got Robert, follow Robert's rules, surprises whenever possible, and then a bunch that are similar in showing up prepared to meetings, asking questions before and during meetings, sharing your thinking, et cetera. And then for Expectations of Council Leadership, we see lead with respect. A focus on managing the agenda to minimize late-night meetings, definitely a goal of us all, I think. Take the lead on email responses, yeah. Share your ideas and vision. Consider city and council strategic goals, and then lots of regular communication. Expectations of the administration, we have, don't be afraid to tell it like it is. Don't be afraid to give us bad news. Be concise, clear next steps. Our time is being used to good benefit. So that's kind of all similar there. No surprises whenever possible. Ask questions in advance whenever possible. Again, an emphasis on communication. Oh, this is a good one. Council should be mindful of workloads and expectations. I think that's a good expectation. And then respect, respect for others, respect for the administration, administration, respect for council. We all have differing views on some things. All right, well, that's a lot more stickies than I thought we were going to get out of this conversation, so I am glad to see that. I want to now throw it back to the council. If there is any feedback in this space on next steps, would you like to support a set of guiding principles more formally? Does that require some more discussion of these stickies? Or was, do you see this more as an exercise for us to be mindful of, but to keep top of mind for the rest of the year? So I'm going to throw that question to the council.
And I guess I will say, please feel free to just unmute and speak up. If we find that to be ungainly, we can go back to comment, but please feel free to just speak up.
Well, I'm going to jump in real quick, and I will admit that I don't know the answers to this. Do we have a set of expectations in our council rules of procedure, whatever the name of that document is?
That is a good question. Not a structured set that I've seen, although I'll turn it over to Clerk Geezer. Is there anything more informal that could be interpreted as kind of guiding principles within our rules of?
You know, I think you could apply some of the concepts that were on the board to some distinct provisions in the rules. So there's definitely some provisions in the rules about no surprises, communication in relationship to agendas, and there are some guidelines about sort of respect and courtesy related to debate. But there's nothing sort of separately that's softer and just pertains in general to working together.
Barb, did that, or Councilmember DeMichelle, did I answer your question?
Well, the thought occurs to me that maybe we could revisit that document and take the sticky notes and see if we want to add a statement of shared, I don't know, shared values. I don't know, shared values or uh at the very beginning of that document, perhaps that would be a good place to add it in. Just a thought.
So I'm sort of wondering if we can take advantage of the two-part nature of this uh uh retreat. Take this feedback and uh offline, see if it inspires us to make any potential changes uh or proposed changes to the manual, and that we could come back at the second session um with, uh, if anybody wants to say that a proposed change to the manual reflects something that they've seen here. You know, I I don't know if we wanna, I mean, we can walk through the manual in real time this evening. I'm wondering if that's the best use of our time.
Yeah, I agree, and that wasn't what I was suggesting. I was thinking we would do something offline. Yeah, thanks.
Yeah, no, you are on the same page.
Alright, so like if anybody is interested in bringing back a suggestion, if you look over the manual on your own and come to the next meeting with a suggestion, we will, of course, summarize all of this, much like the council leadership did last year um with screenshots of these uh boards that will help us keep it um. But if anybody has anything that they think needs to be adjusted in the council rules and procedure, we can certainly approach that um at that time.
Alright, so what I'm hearing in terms of feedback then is not necessarily any formal recommendation for formal action tonight, so um I like the idea of potentially having a a statement of shared values. I like the idea of kind of digesting what we've done tonight, like Councilmember Martz just suggested. Coming back in a week, and if we have any potential things that we would like to share with the group at the next meeting, we can do that, and then that could lead for feedback on on potentially more formal action there, so as long as everyone else in the council is comfortable with that direction, then then that's that. I see thumbs up, I see nods. Okay, cool. Then that wraps up item one, guiding principles and expectations. Thank you very much. Our next item, which we will not be using Mero for, has to do with weekly leadership meetings. So so just to reiterate, um, Council President Walsh and I have um posed this as a discussion for us to have. Because we are curious what the council thinks as to whether or not a rotating council member at these weekly scheduling meetings, weekly planning calendar meetings is useful and helpful to you, and if so, why? So that way we can kind of dig into that a little bit. So there were a few guiding questions um that helped uh folks prepare for um this discussion, and I would like to open it up to the council um to see if anyone has any thoughts based on those guiding questions. I see Councilmember Martz is is eager um to share his. Thank you very much. So Councilmember Martz, go ahead.
Thanks. Um, as currently constituted, I don't think the third council member adds a lot, but I'd like to rather than saying that we shouldn't have a third council member, I'd like to see if we can come up with a way to have the third council member be meaningful. What I'd maybe suggest is, you know, in the same way that we used to have a a big board and have topics on there, just have the third person be the only person who can bring something up. It's an opportunity for council leadership and the administration to hear from that rotating member um issues that are important to them. Now, I get a lot out of, you know, Wally calling um to to, you know, pay me, and that's something that we didn't have back in the old days, and that's helpful, but I would still, I would come if I had the opportunity to discuss a thorny issue, and I think we could do that without having it be an OPMA issue as long as it isn't, because if each of the five people just come in and talk uh about issues that are concerns, you're not having a, you're not having a rolling meeting or a ongoing uh meeting. It's just that when everybody else, when council leadership and the administration also talks about some pernicious or or gordian knot issue um that you have those concerns, but tell me if I'm wrong. Thanks.
So, Councilmember Martz, your feedback is, would like to make the rotating council member a more meaningful role. Um, and, you know, potentially an opportunity for that member only to bring up and discuss a thorny issue or something like that, right?
Yeah, in another words, a way for leadership, administrative and council to uh survey the other five council members on a, you know, every five-week basis on issues that they might wanna bring up and how the uh leadership, administrative and and counselor uh could address those issues. Thanks.
Alright, anyone else? Oh, uh, Councilmember Ray, I see your question, and then we'll go to Councilmember Jill.
Yeah, I just wonder if we could get some clarity from the the clerks on what are the constraints around OPMA? Can we draw a box around it? What can we do? What can't we do? I think that would would help me better wrap my brain around this.
Yeah, sure. Clerk Geezer, feel free to share what you know, and then we're gonna get kind of a more in-depth um discussion about this next week as well.
Yeah, Councilmember Ray, I know that the city attorney is joining um you at your next council retreat, and she is is planning to have some time for some Q and A, and so this would be a good ensuring.
Uh, Clerk Geezer, your audio cut out there for a little bit, right after you said that the city attorney would be joining.
Okay, can you hear me now? Okay, um, so the city attorney will be joining next Tuesday, and she is planning to provide an opportunity for some Q and A if you wanna delve into this a little deeper. I think one of the concerns um, I think in the past, uh, issues that have been brought up are um transparency. We did provide um meeting notes at one point for those leadership meetings when they were a little bit more comprehensive in nature prior to being focused on the agenda. I think regarding the OPMA specifically, there is concern about um creating a serial meeting, which Councilmember Martz alluded to, where um a fourth council member gets brought into a a conversation about issues that may come before the council. Um, I think if you wanna delve deeper into that, I'd I'd suggest bringing it up next Tuesday, um, if you wanted to probe further.
Great, that's 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 great. It's just hard for me to opine on the on the meeting without knowing kind of what the box is we have to to live inside of, so.
Well, that's good feedback, though, so we need more guidance on those boxes before we can make a a good recommendation. Is that a good summary then, Councilmember Ray?
That that's that's my take. I mean, I'm not either for or opposed, I just uh, I don't look good in orange.
Well, imagine if you have red hair, even more even worse in orange. Alright, um. Anyone else have any thoughts on weekly? Oh, right, Councilmember Joe, you're up next, go ahead.
Great, thank you. Uh, I was thinking about this issue over the weekend, and I'm wondering if if um leadership is not taking uh the burden away from council a little bit. Let me explain. What if these leadership meetings were voluntary? In other words, we had a sign-up sheet um either online or or informally or whatever, so the council members could go to the means if they wanted to, but they didn't necessarily have to. That way, if you had an issue with the swimming pool, for instance, that was coming up, you could go ahead and take a look at that list, if there if there's an open spot, go ahead and sign up there. But let's say that um a council member Hunt is there, but I wanted to talk about the 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 swimming pool. I could talk to her and see if uh she would go ahead and move down a week, so I could go ahead and talk about the timely issue that was coming up. But that way, it's it's the council's burden, our individual council member's burden, to sign up for those meetings and take an interest in what's going on. Um, but leave the door open for council members to attend on an informal schedule. Um, it's just a thought that I had so that um we have a chance to take advantage of those meetings, but not necessarily uh make it a formal uh set of rules that we have to follow.
Alright, I've taken that feedback. Um, let me ask this question. In the last two years, the rotating council member has kind of been designed so that way um you go to leadership the week before you are the chair of the study session the following week. Has that been helpful? Does anyone have any comments on whether or not that's been a helpful practice? Yeah, Council President Walsh, and then we'll go to Councilmember Ray.
Yeah, uh, I haven't found, I I liked the concept of that, but I haven't found that to be at all useful, um because it got messed up, the rotation of it all. Um, so it's a great idea, but didn't end up working well for me in practice.
Councilmember Ray?
It is an idea that could work really well, because it's nice if you're chairing a meeting that you have some input and some uh opportunity to look at the agenda before the meeting, uh but the council president is spot on. When trying to schedule them all out and things move around and um you have a fixed uh leadership schedule, it's it's more difficult to synchronize those things. So uh what is an interesting point is, if the purpose of leadership is to set the agenda, then inviting the specific person who is going to chair the next study session to that meeting makes a lot of sense from an agenda perspective. If the objective is something larger than that, then it's gonna get muddied up, um and it's gonna be harder to manage, so. Yeah, yeah, so yes and no.
Councilmember DeMichele, you're up next. Oh, sorry, Councilmember Hunt, you're up next. Oh my gosh, Councilmember, I just pulled a Mary Lou. Uh, Councilmember Martz, you're up next.
I thought I thought of Mary Lou is when your mic is is not on, but anyhow, uh, well, two things. A, I mean, the agenda starts getting written a lot more before the Wednesday, I mean, a lot sooner than the Wednesday before your meeting, right? So if you were going to have, be part of leadership and planning an agenda for the meeting that you're gonna chair, you'd probably need to do it a week and a half before the meeting, not a half week before the meeting, unfortunately. Um, and the second thing is that uh I like a solid half hour or forty-five minutes of focused me time with the administration ahead of when I'm chairing. Um, I, you know, I I would need a big, uh, you know, I like having a big block of time. So, you know, if we did that at the Wednesday morning meeting, I'm just, I'm gonna use a half hour, forty-five minutes of that time to just sort of poke holes at at uh things, because I just like to be super well-prepared when I'm sharing a meeting. Thanks.
Okay, uh, and now Councilmember Hunt.
Thanks. I think there is two objectives here. There's the agenda setting piece, which I understand to be helpful for the administration and for the process overall, and then I think there's the checking in on other timely issues. Um, I like the idea of having some flexibility with the other timely issues, because um one of the reasons that the current system, I think, doesn't work very well for that is because it's on a fixed schedule, so even if you had a timely issue, you would have to wait um five weeks or whenever your turn comes up, which isn't isn't, um, doesn't really address that need in any event. So um I think they could be decoupled. Um, there's a agenda setting, and if it's if it's not something that um if it's something that I've, when I was in leadership, I thought maybe sometimes some of that could be done by email with between the leadership um and then maybe save time for the chair to go through issues that they need to work through with the administration, so maybe there's some flexibility there, but um seems like we have two objectives, and maybe we consider a way to decouple them.
Okay, so recognizing that there are two things going on, they're checking out on timing issues, but also the agenda settings. Okay. Um, and then, Councilmember DeMichele?
Uh, thanks. Uh, number one, I uh I think that uh Councilmember Joe's suggestion of signing up uh that we should explore that, I I kind of like that idea. Um, secondly, in terms of preparing for the council meetings that we chair, um, I have felt totally supported by the city clerks on that in terms of wa- walking through the agenda, uh walking through any issues, getting a annotated uh agenda, you know, provided and so forth. Um, I think I agree with Councilmember Martz, I need more than, and then and then it's not fair to use other people's time to focus in on what you wanna do there, so uh I've been very pleased with how the clerks have supported that. I'm not sure that that's part of the leadership meeting uh or that it it, you know, even should be, so uh but I do think I like Councilmember Joe's suggestion that perhaps it becomes more of a opt-in rather than uh a requirement to attend.
Alright, well, we've got a lot of feedback, and it sounds like there is interest in exploring this potential opt-in way of doing it, but then there is also maybe some more discussion needed or follow-up needed around the two aspects of leadership meetings. There's agenda sending, agen- agenda setting, and then bringing up timely issues or those thorny issues that you just wanna work through. Um, so um in terms of next steps, I'm not entirely sure where we stand. I think that uh Council President Walsh and I can certainly explore the um opt-in sign-up for leadership meetings with the administration. We can summarize the feedback that we've got tonight as well um and share it with the council to ensure that we didn't miss anything. Um, are you miss, am I missing anything in terms of next steps that you can see, Council President Walsh?
Um, I I guess I would say, let me see if I can poke into this a little bit more, because I've heard the concept of it's valuable to be able to ask questions and kind of receive timely interaction um with the administration uh as well as it might make sense to decouple the two ideas, the agenda setting and the um seeking information. So let me see if I can ask some questions there. The people attending the weekly leadership meeting are your council president, deputy council president, the mayor, the city administrator, and then usually the deputy city administrator. We know everybody has a Monday check-in call with the city administrator and should be scheduling a call every two weeks with uh the city administrator as well, to be able, and quite honestly, can call at any time to ask questions. Is there another set of people that maybe you don't feel like you're getting as much interaction and kind of policy conversation time, or the ability to bring up timely issues that you feel like you're not able to get through a city administrator, regular or, you know, infrequent call as needed? Is there someone else at that meeting trying to explore, is there is there another way to achieve that goal that still gives the opportunity to discuss that issue that one might have? If that makes sense. City Administrator Bob Kuit's comment.
Yes, good evening, uh, Council President, members of the council. Um, something I'll mention that some of you do, and maybe you don't know that some of your colleagues do, is that some of your colleagues are very open and free to ask for meetings on different subjects. So if there is a issue of concern um that comes up in one of my discussions, uh I will then set up a meeting with the appropriate staff. Sometimes I'm included, sometimes I'm not included, uh to give the details on that. Uh, Deputy Council President uh Hall, for example, interested a lot in water um and so has asked for some standing meetings uh about water, partially because he's interested, partially because of the role he plays with Cascade Water. Um, Council, uh, Councilmember Hunt, um, the Wyra uh issues has, you know, will ask for from time to time for meetings, but not all of you do, and so I guess I'll just take this opportunity to say, you know, if there are uh smaller meetings you'd like to have, let me know. Part of my job is to set that up, or just to get information. Council President Walsh asked the question about a bill uh that was on the AWC uh hot sheet. Uh, what was that, yesterday, two days ago? Uh, and I had Shelley Helder uh respond to that, so you know, part of it is talking with me directly, but also part of it is use me as a conduit uh to get information, and again, you all do it in different ways. Uh, but I thought it was worth just spending a minute to say this, of how some of your colleagues take advantage of that.
Great, I appreciate that. Anybody else that we've seen or we've heard, you know, we can get in contact with the city administrator? Yeah, Councilmember Ray.
Thanks, just in listening to that conversation. Thanks, just in listening to that conversation, I think that what, and I think councilmember Hunt put this really well. There, there's two separate things here. And we used to roll them together back in the day because we didn't have as a, possibly as a responsive or as an engaged city administration or city administrator. I don't know what the, the, the rationale was for it, but we put them together. But, you know, they're, they're, they're really separate and discreet and and so we can roll them together, but we can also do them separately. And councilmember Marx said something that really resonated with me is, is that opportunity to not only talk to this administration, but to talk to council leadership about things that matter to me. So, you know, it might be that it's something where we can set up other communications channels other than leadership. Or we can leave it at leadership. I don't know that it matters much, but it's a, but when we conflate the two ideas, it, it, it confuses things.
Yeah, I guess since I haven't really shared, this is councilmember Hall, by the way, because I haven't shared what I'm thinking yet. I guess my experience with the Wednesday morning meetings, it's really just felt to me like more of a formality. I see that the city clerk sends out the planning calendar, so I pull that up on my calendar while the city administrator runs through the list of what's to come. And it's really, hasn't been a lot more than that. Every now and then there's kind of an emerging issue in the community or something in the news. But I agree that outside meetings with with the city administrator, connecting with the city administrator to connect with staff about a particular passion area you might have or just interest area is, is a good next step. And also, I think, I think a year ago, councilmember Goodman, former councilmember Goodman also gave us a good suggestion, which was to set up those kind of three council member meetings more often between the three of us to talk about issues that aren't currently before the council, where we just talk about issues more generally, but understand how each other think as council members and share dinner or kind of have a more socializing, a socialization aspect of that too. So I guess personally where I'm feeling, I think that we can pull the rotating council member from this Wednesday morning meeting, keep that more on scheduling, on the planning calendar, and then look for opportunities to engage council members with staff about issues that they're interested in and with other council members to discuss public policy that isn't necessarily before council immediately. So that's what I'm thinking and I'd be curious too if anyone else had any thoughts about that. And it's okay if not.
I was gonna say, I think we've heard from most everybody. My own commentary is that, yes, I experience much the same thing. I think it's also the intention of deputy council president Hall and myself to reach out more often and be able to engage with council members and really listen to what are some of the experiences you're having with the meetings. And so we want to make sure that we're not having a serial meeting by doing some of those listening sessions. So that's the other concern that I have with keeping a third council member at that leadership meeting if something was to come up there and then we had to reach out in order to listen to what's going on. So that's a little bit of my concern.
I'm curious if anyone's mind or anyone's thinking has shifted throughout this conversation or if there is still a council interest to explore this opt in voluntary leadership meeting. Uh, sign up. And if anyone might be willing to speak to that effect. Uh, councilmember Hunt.
I, I don't see the harm in trying the opt in because if we set it to, if we limit it to agenda setting and people want to opt in to participate in the agenda setting and hear what's happening next, I guess, I don't, I don't see a problem with, with trying it. So.
Okay, and I also want to go back to councilmember Marx too, because one of the piece of feedback that you have was, was making the rotating council member more meaningful. So I want to make sure that we're meeting everyone's needs here in whatever system that we create. So if we were to have shift the leadership meeting to an opt in voluntary sign up, insert synonym here, and then encourage additional meetings with staff about interest areas outside meetings between three council members, would that, would that meet your expectations of what you need as a council member to get the information that you need? And that could be a question for anyone.
I mean, I, I, I take ample use of talking to Wally or other staff members when I get okay from Wally or Mary Lou. I just wouldn't come to the Wednesday meeting, like, there's no reason. If it's just going to be the agenda for the meeting that's four days away, I'm not, I'm not going to that meeting. I, we're all busy and a third person that, I mean, that, 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 that list right there, what's on the meeting in four days, that is really, to me, just the four of you is, I don't see what an additional person adds to that. It's too late to make substantive changes. You're not going to put a new item. I'm not going to go into that and be like, hey, can you talk about the police next Monday? That's not happening. So it's fine, I'll just continue to avail myself of talking directly to staff. Thanks.
All right then. Um, oh, councilmember Hunt, did I miss you or was that your previous comment? Okay. All right, well, I think we have some consensus on next steps. So council president Walsh and I can certainly keep you on the loop about this voluntary sign up and how that, how that's evolving and besides that, then I think we're ready to move on. Councilmember Hunt, anything you wanted, or is not Hunt? Walsh, is there anything you wanted to add?
That's fine. I, I guess what I would say is this is a piece in our council rules and of procedure. So I think we will have to keep it as is in the meantime. And if the third member just doesn't want to attend, that's fine. And then we'll have to look at ways to adjust the council rules of procedure so that we can list that as a, rather than rotating council member sign up. And we'll have to figure out what the process is for doing that type of sign up. So don't expect it to happen within a week. So, okay. So I think at this point, we are gonna take a five minute break. So we've got a five minute break and then we'll get right into the council structure and workflow. So it is seven twenty nine and I will see everybody at seven thirty four.
One, even though it's the end of a long day, is a conversation we've been waiting to have for a very long time. So this conversation is about meeting structure. And I think we've kind of boiled it down to this conversation or this discussion of committees, which was the old way of doing things, to study sessions, which is our current way of doing things. Which means those are the, that's the meeting structure that we've set for ourselves as a way to process through ideas and potential ordinances before it comes to the regular meeting for a vote. So just as a quick history of this, in 2019, originally proposed in March of 2019 and the decision made in May, the first study session was held in September 2019. At that point, we were, we approved it, or at least some of the members that are here now approved it. And others are new since then. And the goal, or I think the, the way it was expressed was this was going to be a one-year pilot. And then we were going to reevaluate and see if this was the right fit for us. Well, one year out of September or May 2019, we are in the midst of pandemic in 2020, and that hasn't happened. So we're coming back to this now. Originally, the reasons kind of expressed from the administration, I went back and looked at the PowerPoints, for the pivot towards study sessions was, one, efficiency. It would give us fewer touches on each item and faster progression because we were eliminating the referral back to the full council. And then they had to refer it back to the committee. And so there was long periods of time between each conversation point rather than having a twice monthly study session meeting that it could be talked at, at one meeting and then the following meeting. So that was one thing, was kind of that efficiency idea. Transparency was brought up, allowing public comment at all meetings. Because I think there were mixed ways of doing things with the committees as far as taking public comment or not. And then having all of the council members, all seven members, rather than just three, allowed for the full council input and expertise. And then finally, compliance, OPMA and risk. A three-member committee structure was high-risk and difficult to monitor. And council member substitutions would cause problems because then we'd end up getting four people who had discussed an item deeply. It also meant that the three members couldn't talk to other members outside of the meeting. It would create chain meetings and such. So those were kind of the ideas that were presented by the administration as the reason that we would want to consider study sessions versus committee structure. But at this point, I think I want to take a look at it and go, okay. Well, a lot of other cities have also made the transition. When I was looking around at all of the cities around us, the only one that I could see that are still using committee structure is Renton. The rest are using a variety of study sessions, either built into the same meeting, where they have really super long meetings that start at like 3 o'clock and go until 9 o'clock. Or they do it on alternating weeks, much like we have with our study session model. And so that gives a little bit more of the history. But at this point, I think what we want to do is recognize that we're coming into this as a council. I've heard a lot of different reasons why the study session model isn't working for people. And so the way we want to frame the conversation is starting out with just problem definition. So defining what are your problems with the current scenario? What would be your problems or what were your problems with committees? Or what would be your problems if we were to go back to that? So that we can get to a defined set of problems before we can start problem solving. So that it isn't just, I prefer study session, I prefer committees. I think there's ways to work within that problem and really problem solve. So what I'd like to do is, you were kind of given a bunch of questions to frame the conversation, which was based on your own experience. What problems are we trying to solve? What out-of-the-box ideas do you have to solve those problems? Assuming we stick with study sessions, what changes could be made to meet your needs, assuming we transition? So a lot of those are into the problem solving. But I really want to know right now is what are the problems that you're having currently? And I'd love to go round robin and just hear your whole list of problems. Because the idea is the clerks are going to write it out on the Miro board. And then we're going to be able to go back into it and mark down agreements. So we want to just get everybody's problems out. So if anybody would like to go first and then round robin call on another council member, that would be great. Councilmember Martz.
Thank you. So what I wrote down was, first off, insufficient time for useful presentations by staff on ABs and policy decisions. And would it help the clerk if I put that in, if I put that language in the chat?
I got it, Councilmember Martz.
Okay. The second I have is insufficient statusing of recurring non-AB topics, e.g. IPD staffing. The third I have is no venue for direct public engagement, as in back and forth with the public. And the fifth I have is insufficient depth of review by council, merely feelings and opinions about a policy or AB.
And Councilmember Martz, could you repeat the second one? You said insufficient statusing of, what was that?
Sorry, I said there were five. I just realized I only had four. Insufficient time for useful presentations by staff on ABs or policy decisions. Insufficient statusing of recurring but non-AB topics. In other words, if it's not an agenda bill, and my example was IPD staffing, right? Which was a topic that when we had a services and safety committee, was a sort of recurring standing broadly speaking topic in, in that committee.
Okay.
Thank you.
And can you call on another council member or if somebody wants to volunteer?
Well, I'm just going to pick on Chris.
Great.
Thank you, Councilmember Martz. I have three things. One is the ability to actively edit and refine agenda bills as we are working them. That was something that committees could do, is something that seems unwieldy in study sessions. I agree with Tola on the improved public dialogue. Committees seem to be a little more engaged with the public than the study session. Then again, that also might just be an artifact of COVID. And then it's unclear in some study sessions what the consensus of the council is. Whereas in committees, we were always very clear on where the committee stood on a particular piece of work. And then the other thing is, because we don't have clarity on the specific views, everybody, we have to go through the same thing over and over again. Where I say, yes, I agree completely with Council President Hunt, that was brilliantly said. And, and so to provide that reinforcement of, of a point, so it's clear where the consensus is. So those are mine. And so I'm going to pick on Council President Hunt. Former Council President Hunt.
Thank you. It's funny because I agree with a lot of the things you said. So the first one that I had on my list is ambiguity of direction. I think other people have phrased that differently, but that's how I phrased it. Also, quality of discussion and requiring a lot of, of time even when we're initially at a consensus. So that, that was my second one. And that, that's similar to Councilmember Ray's point about we have to all verbally agree with each other, even if we agree. And I also think the organization of topics is useful by theme. And that was something we had in committees. So that's sort of a problem for me in terms of it's helpful to have similar items that are on a theme presented together. So you can see that more holistically about what's happening in a certain space, public safety, for example. And then, and then there, there is, I think, Councilmember Ray, I think, phrased it well, the ability to edit. So my, my problem with, one of my problems, I had the stage of, the stage at which we get items seems to vary a lot by the AB. And so that's, that's my, one of my concerns about study sessions is sometimes we get items at a point where it's really impossible, I think, to edit or to see the language. And that was part of the design, I think, of study sessions. But it makes it, it hard when we have some items that are at the AB stage and some items that are very early in the development process. And that's my list.
Do you want to call on somebody?
Councilmember DeMichele.
Thank you. This is Councilmember DeMichele. So I think I'm going to be the odd person out here. I really like the study session. And so although I, many of the points have been made so far are, are well taken and, and I think need to be worked on. As a citizen who used to engage with the city council on many different occasions, and there were many times when I went to committee meetings that there were only two or three citizens in the audience. There weren't any cameras. I would talk to people and they'd say, I didn't know that there was a committee meeting. Or I didn't know that the council even had committees. Or how did you find out about that committee meeting? And really, you had to be engaged in order to find that out. And so the transparency piece, I think, is, is really critical. How do we, you know, if we were to go back to committees, I think that's one of the big flaws that, that the committee structure had. Just posting a meeting is not telling people that there's a, a committee meeting going on. So and then the other thing that I observed again, as someone in the audience and not as a council member, but a decision would come to the council. And yes, there were people on the council that knew all about that particular decision. But there were also, half the council didn't know anything about it. And so you kind of were biting your nails, what kind of decision were they going to make? Because half the council really didn't have the in-depth information that the other half had. And communication was not always clear. And so, and then so sometimes that meant that the legislation went back to the committee again. So then that meant you were going back to the committee again, to, to that committee. Other times, the legislation got passed and sometimes not as well thought out as it could have been. So, so I like the fact that all seven of us hear the same information. Councilmember Martz's comment about the depth of the information, I think, is well taken. You know, we're all together, it, we do get truncated pieces of information. I, I agree with that. But I think that with all of us there and all of us hearing each other's questions, that that leads to at least a better understanding among all seven of us as to what the legislation is about. So I think that we would have to, if we're thinking about going back to committees, the transparency issue would be foremost in my mind, as well as how do we communicate a piece of legislation so that all council members are fully informed and have the same information? Those will be the two problems that I think we need to solve if we go back to committees. Thanks. Oh, let's see, who should I pick on? Councilmember Joe, have you spoken yet?
I have not. Thank you, Councilmember Joe here. I don't really have enough experience to comment on the current system. But as I've observed things, there's a continuity of council knowledge that we get with a committee system that we don't necessarily get with, I mean, that we get with a, yeah, we don't, we don't necessarily get with a, a three-person committee. Let, let me explain that a little bit more. So on water issues, for instance, we know that Zach is, you know, the number one guy with all the knowledge. When you had a committee, you had two other people that were at least the heir of parents, or at least were people that knew enough to, to take Zach's place in that subject matter area should Zach leave. You know, if he becomes a senator or whatever. So there's a continuity of knowledge that you get by having committees where you have one, two or three people that are knowledgeable about a particular subject along the way. But you don't necessarily get when the full council gets together for these sessions. We all have areas where we are stronger and weaker. We have more interest in Title 18 that we might have in, in the, in the public, in public works, you know, and asphalt laying. So when we have committees, it enables us to specialize a little bit more. And then you have the ability to not lose any knowledge should you have other members go off a council. You have backups along the way. So that's the, the only point that I think is, is better with the committee structure, is the continuity of knowledge that you might get along the way. So Councilmember Hall, have you gone?
No, thank you. Councilmember Hall here. I'm seeing a lot of similar problems identified that I had thought about. So ambiguity of next steps was kind of the first problem that I had written down. So I see that kind of fitting in nicely with ambiguity of direction and uncertain what consensus is in study sessions. I think that leads to another problem, which is really my main problem with study sessions. I don't have a ton of issues with it because it's also the only thing I've really known. And that is the number of touches that are touch issue on a particular item. So we provide feedback as a council. It's not always the same. Let's say two people are providing feedback in one area and the rest are providing feedback in another area. So now the administration will go back and incorporate that feedback into changes that we'll see for the first time up on the dais of a regular city council meeting. And if those two council members, you know, aren't in agreement, that's one issue. But then there's just, just more general issue of seeing new changes to an ID or an agenda bill for the first time up on the dais, which I think should be good practice to avoid that whenever possible. I also, did I have any more comments on that? No. So yeah, that touch issue is kind of the biggest one for me. Another problem that I see is there are opportunities for community comments, for the community to come in and comment. Several opportunities after each agenda or after each ID now in a study session. But there isn't necessarily opportunity for the community to ask questions real time, just like we do. And I think that might, well, I'm getting into the solutions right now. I think that might be worth exploring, but I, you know, there isn't really a format for the community to ask questions and get an answer of staff at a particular meeting without a council member repeating the question for staff. So that's where my head's at. And I believe the only person who hasn't spoke yet is Council President Walsh. Go ahead.
Thanks. Loving this. One of the items that I'll put down is with a study session, one of the problems I think we've run into is ad hoc committees, both in their transparency and their necessity, I guess I would say. I don't know if you need to explore that more than just the necessity of having ad hocks when we don't have a subject matter committee structure. Secondarily, I think committees, having only a three-member input, sometimes lacks the, it lacks the input from everyone at an early point. And they're not able to provide feedback or ask questions at that point because of OPMA rules. And then I think right now with our study sessions, I've almost seen things move too quickly. I think our ability to hold an agenda bill to a second meeting in order to either review the edits that we had proposed or just be able to have more time to deep dive onto it, hasn't happened in the way that we're currently handling study sessions. So I think I will pause at this point and just ask, after hearing the discussion, does anybody else have something that's on their mind that's come up that they want to add in as another potential problem? Anybody?
It's not a problem, but this Councilmember Hunt, I, I just wanted to clarify. And Councilmember Martz can correct me if I'm wrong. But we did take public comment at committees when we did the committee structure. And it just sounded like that was one of the differences between the committee structure and the study session. I wanted to clarify, at least in all the standing committees I served in during my time on council, we took public comment.
Okay. And Councilmember Martz?
Yeah, I, I think that, I, I don't know if it was written up that we had to. It was either that public comment was optional or, I mean, I, in practice, I think the idea of having a discussion with the public was somewhat up to the, the chair. I always, you know, I didn't say somebody could talk for three or five minutes and then they were done on a subject, right? I didn't, I didn't let the public directly address staff. But I would, I would, if I thought the public was asking a question that, I mean, we basically wound up sometimes having dialogue where it was council, the, the committee member facilitated so that the public could ask some questions and we could get answers in real time from staff. I think that's the big difference, right? There was an expectation that if, if audience members had questions that we thought were useful to ask, we would, we would ask those questions for them. So we did sort of act as a filter, but it just, it allowed for a lot more back and forth with staff than, than I've seen with, with study sessions. Thanks.
Great feedback from somebody who's been here through a few changes. Councilmember DeMichele.
Yeah, and I'll just add that there were, I can remember several times when staff requested that we come, if I was representing a nonprofit, for example, come with a presentation. So I, I don't know whether that would count as public input. Sometimes they went well beyond five minutes. And so that would be part of the dialogue that was occurring, I, I think. So that was also part of the meeting.
Okay, so we're getting a little bit more details there. I think this is great. So at this point, I'm, yes, Deputy Council President Hall.
Yeah, could I also just share one more problem that I saw as an observer of the committee system? And that is, it didn't seem like there were equal or sustainable scopes of work across all of the committees. And I see that as an issue both for workload of council members, but also burnout's not the right word, but you know, burnout for council members. And I think that that is a problem worth adding to a sticky and acknowledging. But if any council members were, who were a part of the committee structure feel differently about that, I would be very interested in hearing your thoughts on that.
Okay.
No, I, I'm sorry. Yeah, I'll, I'll comment on that. I think generally speaking, land and shore had the most work. And sometimes services and safety would have a bunch of work. And utilities occasionally would have a bunch of work. Oftentimes with, like when we're doing capital plans. But generally speaking, it was land and shore, services and safety utilities. So I, I, I can see where if one was going to build subcommittees from the ground up, there'd be some leveling that would need to occur.
Great. Councilmember Joe.
Thank you. I, I would concur with Councilmember Martz on the distribution of work in the committee structure. When I was on council previously, there were certainly were some committees that had a little less work as, as it seemed. And but that also gave an opportunity to have in-depth conversations about some of the other, you know, topics that were related but weren't necessarily part of an agenda bill, which is one of the things that Council Martz touched on in his first comments. And, and I thought that was pretty constructive at times. When I was on the Services Committee where we were dealing with police issues, and it wasn't always that we had an agenda bill there, but hearing from the police about their negotiations or hearing from the police about community policing and how things were going with a new area of town that was coming in, such as South Cove or what have you, was, was important and informative for me as a council member to do the work that I needed to do to bring in the city as a whole and to think about the city as a whole. So just a comment to consider.
This is great. Loving it. Okay. So next. So, um, next steps here is really for us to take a look at the, the list of problems that we've come up with. So I'm going to ask all of the council members to go into Miro, and then I'm also going to ask the clerks to bring up a presentation of this, uh, area where we're showing the meeting structure. And our goal is going to be to assign our dots. Now, I wasn't quite sure we were going to get this many problems on here, so I initially started it out with, uh, three dots each. I think I'm just going to make the executive decision that everybody gets five dots. And so I'm going to copy them out here, um, for everybody, unless I'm going to hear just a roar of protest that people, oh, excuse me. I'm sorry, I'm not allowed to say votes. These are dots, not votes. So these are ways to indicate preference. And so everyone is allowed five preferences, uh, I guess, in this way. So that doesn't want to sit there and align. Okay, I think I have given everybody five dots. Can you put more than one dot on a sticky? I don't see why not. Let's go with it. Yes, I think you can put more than one dot on a sticky. So if everybody would, yay from Councilmember Ray, thank you very much. If everybody would take their dots and move them around, and... Okay, we're progressing through. I think we're, I don't know, some people are halfway done, others are overachievers. Okay, so we've got a few more, just putting out there and everybody getting a chance to finalize. No rush, we'll, we'll give everybody a chance to evaluate where they landed at the end of it all. Okay, so I'm starting to see that everybody has put out their indications of preferences. So I'm going to just start counting on things, so one, two, three. So it looks like some of our top ideas is improving the public dialogue. We've got six votes, six indication dots on that area. We've got five indication dots on, ability to actively edit and refine ABs, or items come in a variety of stages. Sometimes opportunity for input is limited. Now you're moving things around. Now we've got seven dots on improved public dialogue. I'll take it. Okay, so seven dots on improved public dialogue, five dots on ability to actively edit and refine, also five dots on, uncertain what consensus is or ambiguity of direction and next steps. And then going beyond that, we've got four dots on insufficient statusing of recurring, I'm moving that dot so that I can read, but non-AB items. And then we could probably also include the ones with three dots, um, as we kind of go through. So we've got insufficient time for useful presentations by staff on ABs. So does that, does that go toward any of the other ideas? I'm trying to see if there are any other things that would kind of combine. I guess study sessions items moving too quickly might also, I don't know. Number of touches insufficient. Do we feel like there's three here that useful presentations versus insufficient depth of review? What if I just called one of the problems that we can brainstorm on, problem solving on would be like insufficient time and touches? Does that kind of, what I'm seeing is several of the items that have around three are related to kind of this depth of review?
I, I mean, I, I, I would suggest that the insufficient depth of review is actually closely related to, the, the one about ability to edit and refine, the, the one that's got five, they're, they're similar.
Yep, no, I think you're, you're right there.
As the author of the, as the one, as the author of the one that has three, I'm, I'm, I'm comfortable that the issue would be addressed by the one that has five.
I'm moving them, don't worry, I got them. Okay, we got that. So then the actively refine ends up with one, two, three, four, eight. Okay.
But as the author of the insufficient time for useful presentations, I do think that's its own topic that isn't reflected in the other ones.
Yep. So I'm coming down to kind of, we've got in the, the next section over, if the clerks will just move it over to the next section just to preview. What we're kind of running into is three main problems I think that have stood out. And then problem other obviously allows us to problem solve on some of the other ideas because we don't want to just problem solve on the, the main topics that have come up. We want to put some meat on those and really focus on them, but we want to be able to also provide, um, answers and solutions to some of the things that we've come up with. So I think being able to see kind of those top three come out ahead, and then we can play around with, um, some of those other ideas. Does that sound good to you guys? Do you think we need another main box?
Yeah, I have a, a thought, and it's not necessarily about, um, whether or not we need another main box, but there are some things about study sessions that work well. I mean, I think we talked a little bit about them, and so we were focused on the what didn't work well. But I don't, as we, I guess it's just as a frame, as we move forward, let's not, um, throw out, uh, baby with bathwater here because we're just focusing on what doesn't work. Because there's some things particularly about getting, um, a lot of people involved and everyone hearing the same message and things like that, that I think are really important that we don't lose sight of. So just wanted to throw that out before we started moving into the brainstorming.
That's great, and I think I saw, uh, Councilmember De Michelle raise your hand. And keep in mind, I can only see four or five of the council members, so you may need to comment if I'm not seeing you raise your hand, or just...
I got my question answered, thank you.
Okay. Fantastic. So, I think we were supposed to take another break at this point. I'm wondering how many people want to take a break versus feel like moving into solution? Making? Anybody? Martron from One Person, question, Councilmember Martz?
So, um, are we, it seems like the list of potential solutions are different if you're saying what are the solutions to address this if you stay with study sessions versus, uh, if you go to, uh, standing committees? So can I get clarity on what the solutions, how the solutions are supposed to be, uh, structured here?
So I think our goal was not, not to sit within, there are only two ways of handling things, and not to say that we can only do it in study sessions as they are now. So I'm not sure I have a great answer on this. I think if we're proposing solutions, we might be able to say to improve public dialogue, I guess we could define within the problem that this is a problem with study sessions versus, uh, committee structure. Have that listed as part of the problem statement? And then if there is something that is, um, coming up that you might see as a way to solve it within that structure or with the other structure, that makes sense? Do you have any suggestions, Councilmember Martz?
Uh, I guess that at the risk of complicating things, my suggestion would be to have sort of the left side of the box be for, solu- solutions that are related to, uh, keeping the study sessions and the right side of the box be solutions that are, uh, related to standing committees. So, however, however you want to call that, that would be my suggestion.
You're on mute. Thank you. I'm trying to do too many things at once. I think we can take the presentation down so that we're working face to face, so that we're doing all of the editing offline and such. And then I think, uh, Councilmember De Michelle, did you have a comment?
Oh, just that, um, some of the things I wanted to put up could apply to either committees or study sessions. And so, um, I, that's, you know, I, I think that there are ways that we can improve both, so. I don't know that I could put my ideas on both places at once.
Well, first of all, it's going to be up to Tisha and the clerks to, uh, do the writing down so we don't have to worry too much about that concept, but I get your point. Councilmember Ray, did you have a comment?
Yeah, I just want to riff on, uh, Councilmember De Michelle. I don't think it's an either or. I think it can well be a both. And, and it's what's most appropriate, and, and then how to make it work within that setting. Because there is a lot of good stuff with study sessions, and, um, I don't want to lose sight of that. But there's places where, um, study sessions may just be not the right, right tool. So, um, I, I, I'd like us to consider, um, some sort of a hybrid model, and even a model where things can move from committee into a study session, or call it a committee of the whole. So, so I think, I think that there's some, some opportunities to, to think in a hybrid model. We've been doing hybrids so much lately.
I appreciate that concept. I think I'm a little bit tired of hybrid at this point. If we could all just return to a new normal, I don't know. Okay, so I think let's, let's try and mention whether we think it, something is a solution to kind of study session versus committees. But I think one of the things Tisha was riffing on as we were trying to train on this was, hey, we can always drag and drop lines to kind of connect ideas. And I think there are other ways that we can visualize and bring in concepts here as we're trying to display. I will come back to you in one second, Barb. Uh, Councilmember Joe, comment on the first box.
Oh, thank you. Councilmember Joe here. I'm wondering if we might be able to tap into some of the great things that they're doing down in Olympia, and Councilmember Hall would be certainly the professional expert on, on this. But with committee meetings, um, we're able to, uh, put in a yes or no, uh, point of view on a particular, uh, piece of, of legislation in the, in the committees. And I'm wondering if we could maybe do that with, uh, polls on different agenda bills that we could put up, uh, after it gets, uh, sent to either one of them, and then, uh, open it up to the public so that we can at least have an idea of what public sentiment is on a particular issue. If no one comments on it, that certainly says something. If we have a lot of comment on it on both sides, that certainly says something as well. But that gives an opportunity for people to participate at the level that they want to. They could just do the poll, the poll, they could write a comment if they'd like to. You know, it just gives an opportunity for many different levels of participation there and would improve the public dialogue overall as we kind of look at the comments from the audience and weigh that with the comments that we're receiving online as well. We'd have to cut it off at a certain point so that we weren't, um, having comments during the meeting, et cetera, et cetera. But a poll over a, a defined time could be a helpful tool for us to improve that public dialogue.
Okay, so it sounds like polls to the public might be a good one. Another thing that kind of riffed off of my mind on that was using a kind of the same idea that we used to do in committees, which was a thumbs up, thumbs down, on is something ready to move forward? That would be a kind of poll of the council members, which I think goes into kind of this concept of uncertain what the consensus is, the ambiguity of direction, that, that could be a way to do it. And I would propose that that is some, a tool that could be used in both study sessions and committees. So it sounds like we're just jumping into proposing solutions, but I'm going to go back to Barb. Did you have a question, or are you proposing a solution?
Uh, it took me a little bit to unmute there, sorry. So, um, I'm going to take a huge giant step backwards and say, or, or away from it from a 30,000-foot level and say, what are we doing to help our public understand how to give us public input? Do we, and I'm thinking of the model that City of Bellevue is using right now with the Citizens Academy, training, uh, people how to participate. That's one idea. That doesn't have to be the only idea. I really like Councilmember Joe's idea of offering people instant polls. I mean, I think we should just explore this whole area of how do we give people more access? How do we help them understand how they can give input? How they can follow us without it being a terrifically time-consuming sort of thing? All of those issues. Even, uh, you know, I talked about only one or two people showing up for committees, but we've had many nights with study sessions where we only have one or two people in the audience. Uh, and again, I get questions from people who say, well, how do we know when those meetings are being held? They don't check the website regularly. Are there other ways that we could do outreach to the community, let them know what's happening? Here's how you participate. Let's make it as easy as we can for you, you know, and so forth. So, um, let's explore that idea that we have So, um, let's explore that idea that we have some kind of training for our citizens in how to participate. Maybe we start with our civic organizations. Um, you know, we have captive audiences there of people who are very interested in their community. Um, so I, I don't have any specific model in mind. I just think that there are ways that we can increase participation by being, um, active and, um, forward-thinking about how we can get the public engaged with us.
And let me see if I can poke at that a little bit before moving on. Do you feel like the committee structure was easier to understand for the community and thus would require less outreach and training in order to be absorbed? Do you feel like both of them require more work from our partner to communicate how an agenda bill becomes law? What, what are your thoughts there, how it relates to our meeting structure?
I, I think those comments are for either, either model or a hybrid model. Um, because in either case, we are not getting a large number of participants unless it's a terrifically hot issue. Uh, but beyond that, uh, and again, I just hear from people who say, I don't know how to, I don't know how to follow. I don't know what's going on. And, um, and so they kind of throw up their hands and don't try to pay attention, so.
Okay, thank you for the comments. Uh, Councilmember Marx, you had one?
Yeah, a couple of things. Um, one is, I think that one of the things we could do regardless of study sessions or committees is, uh, it's, I'm, uh, probably just gonna try to put work on Zach's shoulders. Um, so we've got, I, I have been impressed with our response to citizens when council sends responses to emails. I think something else that leadership could do, maybe the deputy could do, is I'm envisioning where we take the agenda, when we take Monday or Tuesday's agenda, on Friday, we put up on the council webpage, we have, we have the agenda listed there. And then we just have a 30 to 60-second explanation for each agenda item. So the public could come in, could take a look, click on it, and Zach or whoever, however we wanted to divvy it up, could actually walk them through it. And I think that the packet, showing somebody a 500-page packet and being like, uh, here you go, uh, is, is not the way to do it. But somebody could see, if they saw it on a website, if it was keyed to short explanations, I don't think it would take a long time to explain because as leadership, you guys would already know what was coming in the agenda and sort of what was expected. And I bet you a 60-second item on each of those, it would probably take a half hour to record uh, all total, and I think it would increase participation, although I can't guarantee it. Um, and the second point that I have is, I do not often disagree with, uh, my fine fellow member De Michelle very much, but I, I have a real concern about polling. Because, um, a lot of the, just, a lot of the things we look at are really challenging. And I wouldn't want to just put it out to get us, gi- give the idea that we're just gonna do whatever the public wants to do. I think about our conversation about, uh, uh, public safety and shopping carts last week. And I think about the road that we took to get to that and the amount of listening to each other that it took. And I just don't know how taking a poll at the beginning of a conversation like that would have necessarily led to the conversation that we had. I think everybody would have said, crime is terrible and we should, you know, throw the, throw the book at these people. And that's not, that's, we wound up with something subtler than that. So that's my concern with that one. Thank you.
Okay, uh, Councilmember Hunt, followed by Deputy Council President Hall.
Thank you. I, I like the exploration of ideas to make, um, to make our meetings and the topics and providing input more accessible. Uh, one thing that we have done when we've had uh, in-person meetings in the past where there have been many attendees is also make it, um, which I, I don't think we can do in the virtual setting without some adjustment, but maybe there's a way. Um, is that when there's a topic and a speaker, um, and you support that speaker, you could identify yourself as, as, um, supporting that, the comments made by that speaker. So we, we have done that in the past when we've had, um, a lot of of attendees. And it is helpful, I think, sometimes to know if you have a large audience, um, what topic the people are, that are attending are interested in. So maybe there's some way to know, know that, um, just to check in, you know, which item are you attending? Because, uh, and are you supporting or, or your interest in attending the meeting? Because I think that does, that does help us. Um, and it was easier to know when we were in person and, um, and currently it's, it's more difficult.
Let me see if I understand what I heard correctly. Are you saying you're asking for, if a speaker comes to the microphone in the previous in-person, that they would indicate if they're also in agreement with other speakers or other comments? Or are you saying when a speaker comes to the microphone, asking the audience members to kind of raise their hands to indicate an agreement?
Uh, well, I, so the idea I think that I have from past experience where we, when we had a lot of people, if this, if you, if you as an audience member agreed with the speaker, you could agree with the speaker, um, you could indicate agreement with the speaker. So, uh, I think my idea for making that work for virtual meetings would be just to do um, a check-in for people. You could, I guess, not, if you're not there for a specific item, you wouldn't have to indicate, but otherwise you could indicate which item you are attending for. Um, so that would give us some more information about who's attending the meeting.
Okay.
Different, different than a poll, but it gives us some information and a way for people to participate.
Yep. And it sounds like, eh, from what I'm hearing from several people is some of the issues that we're dealing with as far as community engagement may be really a lot related to the not being in person, um, as one part of it. But I think there are other elements that we were kind of trying to bring up, which was a, maybe we felt like in committees, there was more public interaction and dialogue at those meetings in a more informal context. And so I'm wondering, because there's certainly stuff that we can do to simplify the agenda. I've looked at other cities that, um, would have a list of all of the next touches on an agenda item on the front page of their agenda, which makes it easier for community members to keep track of what's the next time this is going to come up. So there's a lot of ways that we can work on that, but that doesn't necessarily address the, the meeting structure part of it. Um, so I want to make sure we're also talking about how we improve the public dialogue at those, the meetings. Uh, Deputy Council President Hall?
Uh, yeah, thank you. Zach Hall here. Um, a couple potential solutions, I think, that could fit into the bottom two boxes, particularly for study sessions. Um. I want to echo and agree with, I think that we can use a thumbs up, thumbs down more often to ensure we're being very clear with our feedback, with both the administration, but also other council members, understanding where people's heads are at. Um, if we need to have some specific polling program or, or just use our thumbs, I, I don't really care, but I think, um, something to that effect is, um, worth exploring. Uh, also, I personally think that it would be helpful to have a three-touch policy where your first touch is exploring an issue, providing feedback. Your second touch is getting the changes and seeing the changes, ensuring that it fits with both council and community vision. Um, and then the third touch being adoption of a particular policy. So that way, on your second touch, when you're seeing the new changes, you're not also being asked to, um, make a decision that night on whether or not it's good to go. I think it would be a good operating practice for the council to have another touch after that. Uh, and of course, it, it's, it's completely within council members' prerogative to suggest changes and amendments even up on the dais. I would never think to ask council members not to do that. But I think that this would also, um, almost take care of the problem of no surprises because there's so much time, there's so many touches that we have with a particular issue that by the end, we're all comfortable with the general direction of where it is anyway, so. Um, I would, yeah, three-touch policy, cool, you got it. Thanks.
And I was wondering if, um, you felt like the first item that you had uh, touched upon was that just more of the thumbs up, thumbs down poll of the council members at the end of the meeting? Or at the end of an-
Of an issue. Yeah.
On it.
Mm-hmm.
I'm back now. Um, eh, did you feel like that was covered or was there something else to include there?
Yeah, I think poll of CMs covers that. Mm-hmm.
Okay, fantastic. Uh, Councilmember Marx?
Yeah, I want to build on, uh, what Zach just said, but in regards to if we had a committee structure, one of the things that we heard a few minutes ago was, you know, trusting the committee to make decisions and what if, uh, you know, what if a, something comes back and it's unclear what happened in the committee? And I just want to sort of address an elephant in the room, which is one of the challenges was, we sometimes played a little bit of beach volleyball with our agenda bills and they got bounced back and forth to committee and back out of committee. So, uh, if we went to a committee structure, I would actually take Zach's idea and say, have a three-touch policy, engage a committee, but just say you can't go back to committee. Like, if, if the, the bill, go, the bill does a deep dive at committee, and then if there's further discussion, it just stays at the full council level. So you would have a sort of guarantee that bills would be deterministic. You'd still get a deeper touch in committee, but you'd just say, well, we're gonna keep it at council and we're gonna resolve it at council and we'll use study sessions or whatever else. Um, so I wanted to, wanted to add that if, if we would did a committee structure, I like a three-touch with a deterministic, uh, flow, one deep dive and then stay in regular council, not go back out to committee. Thank you.
Excellent. Anybody else want to comment?
Did that get written down?
Yes, it's going into the fourth other box.
Oh, I see. Okay, thank you.
Yeah. Anybody else, or should I jump in while everybody's thinking? Okay, um, I was thinking through this concept of uncertain what the consensus is and the ambiguity of direction. Um, I think in, that's been one of the issues that we've had with study sessions. I think that was pretty clear when we were coming out of committees that, um, things were packaged up and ready to be viewed at the main council meeting. So one of the things I would propose is to really ask if things are ready to move on and get the agreement of council members that maybe default to holding to a second meeting unless everyone agrees that it moves on. So I think it's similar to the three-touch policy in that you would have initial input and review and adoption. Um. Perhaps just formalizing the concept of we have to agree that it's ready to move on rather than just defaulting to the concept of it moving on. Okay. That is down. Anybody else? I think the goal is, let's really think through what are our problems that we're, we're dealing with here? And how are we able to solve them? So, the, the big, there were two big meaty problems that we were, um, discussing and indicated with our dots, which was improving public dialogue. Do we have a sense whether one method or the other, one meeting structure or the other works better for that? Are there ways to address the issues with each of them that improves public dialogue? And we've got a comment from City Administrator Bob Quitz.
Uh, thank you, Council President. Um, I'm gonna take a chance to throw in two cents here. Um, I think one thing that the pandemic has showed us is that people are interested in, in communicating with us and participating in lots of different ways. The idea that people are gonna come down to City Hall at seven o'clock, uh, Tuesday night and spend three hours with us, uh, in a study session or a committee, uh, is probably not how the world's gonna work as we move on. So I guess I would encourage the council, uh, to continue thinking very broadly about the different ways to have people communicate. Uh, there are a number of platforms, I think, as Council President Wallace has talked about, that other communities use, uh, that are very multifunctional, uh, that allow you to, to post all of the, the information about a particular topic. It allows people to comment. It allows people to thumb up the comments. So if a community member says, yes, this is a great idea, or yes, think about this, then other community members can put a, a thumbs up on that. Um, I, I, I think that the idea that, um, this is all gonna be solved in person in a meeting room on a weeknight, um, perhaps we as a society, certainly an engaged community like Issaquah is moving beyond. So, I, I would just encourage you, and certainly, you know, you, you know, your staff appear to, to help you sort through some of this, um, at your direction. Uh, but I think that there are opportunities, um, where you can have more dialogue in person. But you can also have a robust way for people to communicate in other ways uh, with the council, so that when you're making those decisions, you can have input uh, from all around. And it doesn't need to be a poll with 22 people saying this or 32 people saying that. Um, the, the, there are, there are platforms that communities use around America uh, that are broader than that, which I think may be worth looking at.
Interesting point. Thank you for that. Um, feedback from that on anyone? Does that seem to give us a direction on improving public dialogue? Should we, eh, absorb that concept or kind of consider that concept separate from the idea of committees versus, uh, study sessions? Or do we feel like it is still inherently part of it? Uh, Councilmember Ray?
Um, I think it's, it's absolutely something we need to consider. I think it's a separate issue then from what, what our convening and discussing structure is. But, um, so yes, I think we should pursue it, but I think it's, uh, an independent, um, and augmenting line of thought.
Okay. Uh, Deputy Council President Hall?
Uh, yeah, I just wanted to echo, um, Chris's comments. I think that makes a lot of sense. Um, there's this one, there's one side of this, which is how are we ensuring that those who are showing up to the community, uh, or those who are showing up to meetings feel like they're heard, um, feel like they're contributing to the process? Um, but then there's also, what are the new age, you know, best practice 21st century ways of engaging with the community that lie outside of meetings? So maybe we can take that kind of as just a more general takeaway to explore how we can engage our community more genuinely on issues outside of meetings. Um. I also did want to kind of, because Councilmember Joe had kind of alluded to what they do in Olympia, so I kind of wanted to quickly walk through the, the committee process of what goes on at the legislature. So, very similar to, um, what we do here at the council. Um, when a particular bill is before a committee, members of the public can go through an online system to see what's gonna be discussed, can sign up to testify on a particular bill, um, can very quickly send a message to their legislators or their lawmakers um, about their, you know, more thorough comments about how they feel about an issue. Or they can simply, um, what's it called? Or they can simply, um, make their preference known for the record. It's, then that way it's indicated for the record on that packet. It'll always be indicated that there were X number of people who were supportive and there were X number of people who were in opposition and there are X number of people who are unsure. Um, and whether or not that always guides our, uh, thinking as a council, I think, uh, Councilmember Mart's point is a good one. Um, you know, I think we always have to remember that we want to involve the community in the processes thoroughly and as generally and genuinely as possible because it helps us align solutions with the community. But at the same time, we're a republic and we are elected to make decisions on behalf of the community and to learn and become subject matter experts about public policy so that we're making good decisions for the republic. So it's kind of like a um, give and take there. Uh, anyways, I just spewed a lot. I hope that was helpful um, to the clerks.
Councilmember Marx?
I want to mention one thing when we talk about ways for the community to engage us that I think is important, um, to understand, which is, there is a very basic, I think, concept and duty of elected officials to look their constituents in the eye, not just metaphorically, but literally. I will tell you that in 12 years on council, absolutely 100%, I will tell you that in twelve years on council, absolutely one hundred percent, the hardest thing to do was this, the six months after we had a child fatality off of Newport Way. And all of us on council were told for over six months that uh members of the community felt that we were responsible. Uh, that was again, the hardest thing by far, no question of my time on council thus far. But I think it was important that we all were there and we looked them in the eye. They could come to us and they could tell us the hardest thing that I think somebody can tell somebody else. Uh, and so I want to, I just want to make sure that as we move forward and as we get out of COVID that we always have that. It's one of the reasons why I I hope that after we get out of COVID, we don't generally allow remote participation by council members. I just, I think there's a duty that we have to, like I said, literally look our constituents in the eye. We're a small enough community um that sometimes you're just really unhappy with your elected officials. I mean, really unhappy, boiling mad. And you have the right to look them in the eye and tell them that you're mad and disappointed and think they're doing a terrible job. So I just, as we talk about all these various mechanisms, we always need to maintain that because to me that's one of, you know, the bedrock is that we're elected, right? And that they can throw the bums out. But the next is that they can look us in the eye and tell us what they think. Thank you.
Great, excuse me. Uh, Councilmember De Michelle.
And thank you for sharing that uh Councilmember Martz. I remember that period well and I think. Yeah, I think that's absolutely a duty of elected officials. Um, so uh going back to uh uh City Administrator Bob Quitz's comments uh about new technologies. If we were to return to a committee structure uh and based on the last two years now, I would think that we would be obligated to um to broadcast those committee meetings and um that does kind of lend itself to a little bit of uh discussion about OPMA in terms of now we've got three council members. Are the other four council members going to watch that session? Um, you know, how do we handle um handle those issues? So I'm just bringing that up again because my biggest concern about the committee structure was the uh accessibility and transparency of the of those meetings. So um, that would be my concern. Uh, and I would think that uh there would just be an obligation to be sure that those are broadcast just like uh regular council meetings.
And I saw City Administrator Bob Quitz pop up. Did you have response there or?
No, sorry.
Oh, that's fine. That's fine. Uh, I think next we've got um Deputy Council President Hall.
Uh, thanks. Just thought of kind of a another way to think about improving public dialogue. Um. You know, in 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 particular, even when I was running for city council, I um noticed that community members um. It for the most part, we're more interested in giving feedback more generally about the issues that impact their lives and less about specific agenda bills or specific things coming before council. So I wonder if a more general solution could be to meet that need of the communities by creating a um. It could be accomplished through a a study session or a special meeting or or a committee if we think creatively, but maybe meetings um quarterly or a couple of times a year that are focused just on listening to the community where the council and the mayor um, you know. Sound the alarm out to the whole community and say, what are the issues that are on your mind right now as you live your daily life here in Issaquah? And this is your opportunity to come and talk about it. You don't have to worry about reading a huge packet. Um. Uh, you know, again, I I I struggle with this because then we're still asking people to come to the meeting and talk to us about the issues that are impacting their lives and really should be meeting people where they are. Um, I'm not really sure how to do that during a pandemic, but you know, this could be something that we explore um more thoroughly. And that is, you know, how can we create a venue for more general feedback from the public? Um, where that's our main focus of the meeting, or that's our main focus of an effort, which is just to get public feedback about anything, not about particular items. So I just wanted to throw that out as a suggestion.
Okay, and before I go to Councilmember Ray, I'm just going to say, looking at the board, we've got a lot of ideas and brainstorming happening around improving the public dialogue, though none of them are really representing our problems with committee structures or study sessions. And we don't have a lot of solutions and brainstorming ideas on some of the other ideas. So just putting that out there as far as focusing our time, but Councilmember Ray.
Um, thanks. I wanted to just uh speak to what um Councilmember De Michelle was saying about committees, and I agree that they need to be transparent. And I can't speak to before four years ago, but when we had committees, when I was first on council, they were all broadcast. They were all recorded on the YouTube channel. Um, and and it was all okay if uh uh a council member who was interested in a particular topic wanted to watch the the YouTube channel to to stay up to date. That was actually a really great way for people to track um the legislations that was moving through. So so I I I think that we've made some strides in that area that we could re-engage with and 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 uh create the transparency that I absolutely agree with you uh we have to have. So that's all I wanted to say.
Okay, in order to try and focus us in on some of these other ideas. So one of the main problems that was stated was an inability to actively edit and refine the A B's. And let me see if I can read over some of the other. Um, so there was also, study sessions provided an insufficient depth of review by council. And items would come in at a variety of stages. Sometimes the opportunity for input was limited. So are there any problem solving that we see there as it relates to either study sessions or committees? As a way to make sure we're able to really get in deep and in-depth on a topic. Um, I've lost track. Are we on Councilmember Martz? Yep, thanks.
So so the the Russians have a saying, quantity has a quality all its own. And one solution to this is meet more frequently. And uh meet for longer with some sort of short dinner break so that we could start at five and run till ten or eleven. Uh, so some combination of more frequently and longer sessions. If you're going to stick with study sessions, I don't think there's much of a I mean, a cure has to involve just more eyeball time uh on the bills. Thank you.
Yeah, and I should note that one of the things that was indicated as a reason to move to steady sessions was fewer meetings. And so uh maybe we're we're seeing the result of that. Um, and whether we would solve that by having more meetings in the committee structure or more meetings in a steady session model. Um, it sounds like having more eyeballs is kind of one of the things coming on that. So uh Councilmember Hunt.
Thanks. From my perspective, this is the issue that is inherent in study sessions, but I wanted to make it clear since there's nothing under committees, I think going to committees addresses this. I didn't feel like we didn't have the ability to actively edit and refine in committees.
Okay, so let me dig into that. Are there any ways that you could see to address some of these issues within a study session model? Because it sounds like hmm so far committees do address this issue. Are there any ways to brainstorm a way within a study session model? I don't know if that's back to Councilmember Hunt or anyone else. I think City Administrator Bob Quitz, who also had a comment.
Uh, I I think this is easy. You just tell us that you don't want to uh do it the way we're doing it and you want to do it a different way. Um, that's all you have to say. I mean, I I I think, you know, coming from other communities here, uh, the the fact or sancteness of the agenda bill is a little confusing to me and has always been confusing to me. Um, there's no reason why we can't just come with, here's an issue we're working on. What do you think? And have the council talk about that at the study session. Um, and then have either that second touch come back with as an agenda bill or even that second touch perhaps not even be an agenda bill. So I I I think if this is the council's will uh, we can, we can make this change in the current structure without a big deal. And again, I think as as many of you have said, uh, we can structure this so it's very clear where the council is at the end of each sitting. Um, either yes, you're on track, great, go forward, we're done. Or okay, great, come back and let's talk some more about this, or okay, we're ready to see it in an agenda bill. I I think it's really the council's pleasure. There's nothing about the meeting structure that prohibits the council from doing that. Uh, at least from my perspective. I think you just tell us how you'd like to proceed and we'll, the staff will, administration will will provide accordingly.
So I will push back on that just a little bit um in that I feel like that was what was promised to us with study sessions. That the the concept of a study session was we would come to you with an initial ID. We would, you know, talk over a concept, a topic before it would become an agenda bill. And that hasn't been my experience. Um, so I I think I just want to make sure that as we're we're going through this, that that would be something that is doable and something the administration is willing to commit to.
And again, I can only speak for the two and a half years I've been here and about two of those have been the pandemic. And so while I I'm not, I don't want to use that as a crutch in any way, shape or form. Um, certainly contextually, um, there have been timeframes that have perhaps been more need for acceleration than otherwise. If we are coming out of the pandemic um as, you know, we have basically from the administration's perspective, we're not, we have not planned really beyond the month of February wait pending this discussion. Um, you know, there's really, you know, we we can manage this however the council would like. Um, I will say that as I talk with you all individually, you know, there there has been frustration that things don't move quickly enough and I fear that that frustration will will continue. I think that the if the council just agrees that the 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 format, the form is more important than the fine, oh, the format is is as important as the substance to it. That having those multiple touches, you know, there's there's a community value, a council value to that. The downside may be uh getting things done at a pace that the council would like to see too. Uh, but again, um, if the council wishes us to conduct business this way, I don't think it's a big deal. Uh, I know in talking with some of you, certainly Councilmember Hunt, uh, the expectation was that we were going to check in after a year. We didn't uh largely because of the pandemic. So I think that whatever is decided, whatever way you go, there has to be more of a built-in uh uh check back with how it how it's working. Um, that's the only way that can work moving forward. And again, I think it's just been very difficult to do the last two years.
Okay, so um if we're looking at this inability to actively edit and refine A B's, dig into something deep enough, uh, what I have kind of heard maybe coalescing or at least some of the ideas that layer upon each other is this idea of a three-touch policy. Um, maybe, you know, meeting more frequently and having longer sessions is somewhat a way to do that. Um, but it still relies on the concept of multiple touches on an item and then a City Administrator Bob Quitz coming back and saying, just tell us to bring it to you in a certain form and format and we can do that. Those kind of all seem to be a little bit alignment from the um, got Councilmember Ray and then also City Administrator Bob Quitz.
Oh, I'm just, sorry, I'm being attacked. Um, pardon. So um, I was thinking back to committees and 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 I was the one who talked about the difficulty in editing and so and maybe this is okay and maybe it's okay in some instances, but we really talk about directional things. We want it to look sort of like this and and that's what we kind of give the guidance at the end of a um, a session on, here's where we'd like to go. Um. And you've all worked in big groups and you've all worked in small groups and small groups can have a much more robust conversation about you know, where it says this, this and this, you know, don't you think it should be maybe this, this and that instead? And so that was the advantage of committees is you could have a little, a much more active and robust conversation about the details. And so to Councilmember Martz's point, we could do that same thing with a group of seven. It's just going to be a really um, a long and arduous process. So you know, the beauty of committees is what we could delegate to a subset of the team and say, all right, you three people, go dig into this. Um, actively shape the legislation. Um, and then, you know, bring it back to us and we'll, we'll, we'll go from there as opposed to um responding to a kind of more broad um kind of a policy directions and then the administration coming back with, here's what we think you said, how's this look? So so that's to my my mind, it's really about the wield unwieldliness of a larger group. A smaller group is much more nimble and able to dig into things more quickly than a group of seven. So um, so that's, that's kind of where I stand on the um on the edit thing. It's it's just the ability to actively um put into the agenda bill the the specific language we want, not the general directional language we um communicate.
Okay, and then back to City Administrator Bob Quitz.
Yeah, so thank you, Council President. You know, the other topic, I I I hate to add new topics, but you know, one of them is informational items. Um, on the one hand, I I think we always think that there are things that we want to provide information on on existing projects and programs. Um, but then we get sometimes uh criticized that we spend too much time doing that. And then we put it in writing, we at least last year put it in writing quarterly and then um, you know, either it's not read or not widely publicized. Um, and so that takes up a fair amount of time as study sessions. And so, you know, a a clear direction on the council's desires there, I think could also free up time. Um, so as we're talking about the need to do more discussions and more deep dives, you know, if we give you back an hour uh, that's not a presentation about from Cascade Water on the latest project or, you know, whatever a presentation might be, um, we're happy to do that, but again, always the fear is the criticism that we're not providing updates. So uh, I throw that in the mix because if that can be resolved and we can provide those updates in other fashions, not as part of study sessions, that will open up some time perhaps to address some of the issues you're discussing this evening.
Okay, that's another option out there as a way to create more time. Um, but I think we would have to ask around the council whether that's what our feelings are on those informational updates and what the useful format is. Um. Okay, so in the name of time, I want to see if we can go over to this idea of the problem being uncertain what consensus is and ambiguity of direction. Do we have a sense of whether one of those um ideas, study session versus committees works better or not, if there are solutions there and actually now I'm going to stop and that Councilmember Hunt.
Thank you. The the idea there, the only idea I had is already represented, which is the thumbs up, thumbs down. Um, I think that does work well for budgets and I actually uh understand that that was implemented during the budgeting process to address ambiguity of direction on parts of the budget. So I think we should continue that process in the study sessions, if we continue study sessions. I wanted to make um one other comment, which is, I think it would be good to document that we want to have a check-in under the uh problem other. I think it's whichever one we go with, it would be good to have that check-in. It is something that I have. Um, I I think we we expected, at least I expected to do a check-in um on study sessions and I think that would have been valuable and I would like to document that. I still think that would be valuable after we make changes coming from this meeting.
Great. Um, another thing that I kind of wanted to, oh, uh, Councilmember Martz, you want to ask a question?
Sure, just a process question.
Sure. Just a process question. Um, are we moving towards, I, I'm not sure if I heard in council member Hunt's comments, a supposition that we're going to move towards trying modifying the current study session. It, it feels like we have two fundamental models that we're discussing, either study session with modifications or standing committees with modifications from how they were done before. Wha- what do you see as the path forward to resolution? You're, you're muted.
Thank you so much. Paul De Mary Lou. Um, can clerks, could you pull up the, uh, screen to show kind of the brainstorming piece, um, while we touch over this? Cause ultimately council member Mertz, I think you come down to the ultimate point of this is where, where are we headed? And one of the reasons for focusing in on the problems we're trying to solve and trying to ideate on them was to see if anything seemed to jump out. I'm not sure I'm seeing something necessarily jumping out. I think maybe the three-touch policy and thumbs up, thumbs down addresses some of the, um, problems that we're currently having with study sessions, but I just don't know whether that's enough, um, or whether that brings us to the right area. So, uh, deputy council president Hall, a comment?
Um, yeah, uh, this is council member Hall. It got me thinking about, um, a thought I had over the weekend that I thought was too crazy. So I crossed it off my list. But it seems like some of the things that we're hearing are, um, you know, there are some issues, um, that come before council that it's good to have us all there. Um, it's good to have a more defined, um, policy so that way, um, there's no ambiguity of direction or next steps that we know exactly what is expected of us at the next meeting, whatever that next meeting is. But then I'm also hearing from at least three council members that there is value in more focused, small group discussions, um, to, um, kind of get deeper and play with the issue before then coming back to the full council. And it almost feels, it almost feels like we are starting to cross over into a conversation about ad hocks. So I wanted to, I wanted to ask what, um, the council of the whole, uh, or committee of the whole, um, process was like, um, before I joined council, it seems a lot like it's very similar or could be very similar to study sessions. And could we accomplish all of these problems with a solution that has a study session? Um, that could then refer a second touch to a specialized group of council members, which is kind of like what we do with ad hoc right now. So I wanted to kick that around and see if anyone had any particular comments about that.
Council member Ray.
Well, let me respond to, uh, the deputy president. Um, you know, back, back in the day when we had committees, we also had, um, I think we call them work sessions, not study sessions. And so there would be, um, on the first and third week of the month, there would be a council meeting. And on the second week of the month is when we tried to target our committee meetings. And on the fourth week of the month is when we would have work sessions. So, you know, it's, it's the same kind of a format. Um, you know, the, the, the nice thing about standing committees is, um, you don't have to have a committee meeting if there's no material for you to cover. So, you know, you can, you can cancel the meetings. Um, with ad hocks, it's, um, particularly the ones we just had is it was just a complete lack of, um, visibility. I mean, we didn't have any visibility to them. And that was one of the, the real drivers for me at least saying, look, if we're going to have committees that, that are going to hang around for a long time, let's make them, uh, formal committees and structure them. But, um, I, I don't think it's a crazy idea. I actually think that the right answer is some sort of a hybrid model where things that require all seven sets of eyes on them, get all seven sets of eyes on them and things that we want to, um, kind of dig into a little bit or noodle, we, we dispatch a committee to do that, um, that upfront work for us. And then we can also, and I think, uh, council member Mars spoke to this, is the informational sessions, um, are really good when targeted to a committee because that's a committee who's interested in it. And if a council member who's not on the committee is interested in it, then they at their leisure can watch that informational update, um, on YouTube. So, um, you know, from where I sit, you know, and not going to the end game, but the end game to me seems like it's a hybrid model where you've got different groups with different focuses that, you know, that because we have different needs. So.
Now I'm going to have to noodle over all of this. You've, you've given a, a third option, which I always love third options. I think third options are really the way to go. Uh, but this presents kind of another idea. So I want to leave the visual up for a moment. Um, and we can go to council member Mertz, but with the idea of after having absorbed some of what we've put out there for problem solving on these four ideas, which is improve public dialogue, inability to actively edit and refine agenda bills. Uh, the third one was uncertain what consensus is and ambiguity of direction. And then the fourth is other. Um, whether, whether we're seeing any end game here. So council member Mertz.
Sure. Thank you, um, council president. So, uh, I, I want to suggest a possible, uh, resolution mechanism. The, one of the things there, there's probably, I'm going to guess that Tisha has probably a lot of thoughts on what might work and what might not work. And so one thing we could do at the risk again of deferring something else to the next meeting. You know, we could say, please come up with, from what you've heard, please come up with an option that's basically continuing forward with study sessions, but with some of these changes we've got here. Please come up with a version that's, uh, standing committees, but with some of the changes you've heard here. And then perhaps a hybrid version and come back with those three and let us choose amongst those three. Um, cause I don't know, I'm not, I'm not ready to parse, uh, what's in front of us and say, what's the path through this right at this moment? But I also think it's really important that the clerk's office probably has some thoughts on functionally what we can get to work and what we can't get to work that I would be interested to have her and her staff, um, noodle on this a little bit from what they've heard tonight, but it, but it, but it's up to you and, uh, the deputy council president on how to, on how to circle the square. Thanks.
I'm not sure I like circling squares, but thank you, council member Mertz. Um, I, I think that's really valuable feedback is recognizing that there may be a few different options that are coming out of this and being able to see a summary of what option A with changes B through F looks like, and then what option Z with changes. Oh, there's too many letters, but you get the, the point. Um, can we go ahead and take this down and we'll look, do more in person? And then council member Hunt?
Thank you. I am interested in seeing what a hybrid model would look like. I, I think the suggestion by council member Mertz of having the clerks, um, work on that if they are able to do that. I think that would be very helpful because there's a lot of ways I think that could work. Um, but it's, it's an idea that I'm interested in. Um, and then I, um, also wanted to comment on the issue that was raised by city administrator Bob Quitz earlier, which is regarding the informational items. Some of the items that are, some of the things that we're grappling with here have to do with the time, uh, spent in meetings. And my thought on informational items is there are certain items that we think that are, um, certain items that we think are important for, for us to make decisions and those absolutely should be presented at the meeting. And also for people that are, um, following along for that, them to see the information as well. So those informational items that are relevant to our decision-making, absolutely, I think we need to see. Um, we have had community surveys in the past that have shown for informational items that are not on things where we're, um, discussing, but are things happening in the community, um, events, things that we aren't making decisions on, but that are important for, for folks, important city functions, important city news that, that people aren't going, aren't going to watch our meetings for that. Um, so we have survey data that supports that. And I think we should, um, think about having the time so we can make the best possible decisions with, uh, focusing informational items on those decision pieces. Um, that's my take on informational items.
Great. Uh, deputy or council member De Michelle.
Uh, thank you. So a question I have, uh, and it doesn't need to be answered now, but I, I, first of all, I like the idea that uh, council member Mertz suggested that we look at a hybrid model. Committees, I am wondering if we also want to go a little deeper and look at the structure of, uh, of those, does every one of those have to meet every month? Should, uh, we have some groups that only need to meet quarterly? Um, let's just say as an example that we have a human services committee that meets, does it need to meet every month? Probably not. And, and I'm just thinking, um, maybe we want to go a little bit deeper about, uh, what each of those, as council member Mertz said earlier, to smooth out the workload and, uh, rethink what topics need to be included. I would love to see equity, which wasn't a topic four or five years ago, to be included in one of those committees, for example. So, what topics are they going to cover and do they need to meet every month? And those kinds of questions um, are things that I think we should dive a little bit deeper on as we get into looking at a hybrid model.
Great feedback. Uh, deputy council president Hall.
Uh, thank you. Is that called here? I also wanted to say, I thought that was a good suggestion from council member Mertz, um, for next steps to kind of take what we've heard and come back with some options. I do think that potentially presents an issue to the administration as they plan for upcoming meetings though. So I thought I would pose a question, maybe while I could jump in here too, but my question then for the, for the council is, um, would we be comfortable remaining with our study session model as it is for another few weeks or just through February while we continue to work on options, come back to the council with those options and have discussions so the administration can plan moving forward.
And toward that idea, I would say that it took about six months to make the transition between, um, committees to study sessions. So, things aren't necessarily planning to move quickly, but, uh, city administrator Bob Quitz, uh, do you have commentary on timeline and all of that? You're on mute.
Sorry. Thank you, council president. Um, you know, we could certainly come back, uh, with the requested, uh, uh, sort of frameworks that have been, um, outlined, certainly not next week. Um, but, but looking at the council calendar, um, you know, we have, uh, the February 15th currently scheduled study session, uh, talking about the hu- the human services strategic plan. Um, I would think that we could at least have something ready uh, for discussion. Then your next study step is scheduled after that's not until March 1st. So, uh, I think that even if we are not a hundred percent there, um, I don't think it's very prudent to wait until March to even have a next discussion. So we, we could do that. Uh, the only other request that I would have, uh, is elapsed time. How much time is each member of the city council prepared to spend on public meetings in the course of a month? Um, because I think that some of these, um, structures, uh, could increase engagement, could increase, um, deeper dives, but it will also likely increase the number of hours, uh, that you all spend in public meetings. So, um, council president, I'm not sure the best way to, um, measure that. Um, but, but I would have to think that, um, you know, we're, we're looking at, you know, the equivalent of at least another evening a month for all of you, depending regardless how it all gets, gets, it's, it's saved out, um, or perhaps even more. Um, and then just additional nights. So it's not only elapsed hours in the course of a month, but you know, how many additional nights? Uh, so if there's a way to get some feedback on that, because if everybody's saying, sure, no problem, two additional nights a month and you know, five hours or 10 hours more of work on top of what we're currently doing, if that's doable for everyone, I think that's helpful. If people are saying, we know we want to work basically within the same framework that we have, which is, you know, more or less four meetings a month, um, you know, that each take between, you know, four and five hours apiece. If that's, you know, averaging, if that's what people are looking for, that's also going to change the recommendation. I wouldn't want to set up a structure and then hear from members of the council, um, why are we meeting so much?
Great thing there. Um, council member Joe, can we put a pin in that question and so that we can cycle around on this, uh, concept of feedback here? Okay, great. Uh, council member Mertz?
Yeah, we, we had those kind of, uh, larger time commitments in the past because what we had was three scheduled meetings per month. And then on the third month, we had a fourth meeting. So we had like three and a third, but then we had one to two committee meetings per month, usually only one, but most people are on two committees. So, you know, you wound up with five and a third city council meetings per month. And, uh, I was, I was fine with that for, for many years. So I'm all in favor. Thank you.
Yeah. And thank you for the summary count for the members who weren't here for that time period. Um, any other feedback? I'll put my plus one in the, I'm comfortable with additional meetings and I would prefer separate meetings rather than longer meetings. I think, uh, I do better decision-making in that way. Any other feedback? Thumbs up, down. Council member Joe.
Um, council president Russell Joy, I would agree that, um, shorter meetings, uh, that have, um, you know, more intensity with, uh, decision-making and robust discussion will probably serve us better than having longer meetings in general. Uh, that's kind of the, the committee structure. And in a lot of ways, we're just calling it something different. You know, we take an agenda bill that's, we really want to dig into, we're going to dive into it, get some good decisions and then, you know, uh, decide on a course of action. So, um, I, I think that that model has a lot of, uh, merit to it. I, I think that, um, I would like to keep the, the commitment, the time commitment about where it is right now, if I could give a little feedback there. Um, the, um, the opportunity to, to kind of limit things, uh, also promotes efficiency both from the council and from the administration and not try to stuff a 10-pound bird into a five-pound bag, so to speak. Right? So, you know, it's, I, there's, if we, if we were to expand it to, you know, more nights and, and more hours, we're just going to fill those hours. But the efficiency is not necessarily there. We don't kind of limit out of what we're doing along the way. So I, I add that comment in there. I, I'm just wondering if, um, the administration might be able to give us a 5,000-foot look at what kind of polling or public comments we could get over the internet or even through our current website, the capabilities that we might have as part of the discussion when you come back for, uh, the other report, if that would be possible.
Council member Joe, council, uh, members, uh, we can certainly try. I mean, the, the, the number of products on the market are, most of them have been bought and sold over time. They're, they're, they're not as numerous as they perhaps once were. So, uh, we could certainly give at least a, a 5,000, I mean, a, a larger overview just to let you know it's out there.
Okay. Good question. So I've heard from two members that are pretty comfortable with additional meetings. One that said, hey, we don't want to expand so much and, you know, have the number of hours expand, um, to the number provided. Any other feedback from members? Council member Hunt?
I think if we, if we, um, for the study sessions, I think if we do thumbs up, thumbs down and, and get through items that we have consensus on quicker, um, I think that will save us some time. I agree with the comments about
time. I agree with the comments about that. For me, too, having the shorter meetings, I think, helps me make better decisions. So I would also like to, so I'm open to having another meeting per month, for example. I also was in the study session system where we had those additional meetings. I think it is, there does have to be a balance, though, and we do have to consider the efficiency, like Councilmembers Joe. The one thing that I know other cities do is they have a set period of time and they have to actually intentionally add time if they want to do that. It might also help the public that's following the meeting. They know how long we're going to be there. So that's one thing for us to consider. You would say the meeting is from eight to 10 or, you know, 6:30 to 8:30. And then if it has to go over because of exceptional circumstances, you could add time, but you would have to, you wouldn't just leave it open-ended. Something for us to consider.
Okay. Councilmember De Michelle?
I'm personally comfortable with adding additional meetings and so forth, but I will raise the issue of equity. And what are the consequences down the road for how we attract people to run and serve on council? And if we have a really, really heavy workload evening meetings, are there certain people that would not be able to run for a council or serve on council with that kind of heavy schedule? So I'm just going to put it out there. Personally, I'm fine with more meetings, but I think we have to think about the long-term impacts of what it's like to serve on a council and who that enables and who it disables. So, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Mart?
Two things. I completely agree with Councilmember De Michelle. There's an equity issue, right? We have to, I've always wanted, I've always had in mind, especially when we've had meetings that started early, I wanted to make sure that we didn't have a body where only people who were retired or independently wealthy could afford to be on council, right? That working families, maybe even a single parent, right, could be on council and manage the time commitment. I will I will add somewhat orthogonal to that point. I will just, I guess, say delicately, the last time we did a salary review, when we figured out what council should make, was back when we had a larger number of council meetings. So we are all getting paid based on a salary survey that was done when we had meetings. Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else? I don't think I've heard from Councilmember Ray or Deputy Council President Hall on the idea of meetings. Okay, Councilmember Ray, you got there first.
Yeah, shame me into it. I have no problem with additional meetings, particularly if they can be more focused and potentially shorter. I think they'll make better meetings, too.
Yeah. And just to close the loop, then, Council President, I was going to say Hunt again. It's every time, every time I say Council President, Hunt comes to my, Council President Walsh. I agree, maybe one to two meetings a month, I would be comfortable doing that. I think Councilmember Joe brings up a really, really good point, which is, you know, how do we drive efficiency in our meetings? But then again, you know, also one of the one of the meeting structure problems that we put down that we were trying to solve was insufficient time for useful presentations by staff, too. So I think a lot of the things that we're saying are maybe not necessarily at odds with each other, but create, well, the challenging, it's a challenging solution to come up with at 9:30 p.m. But I would be fine with one to two more meetings a month. And I think if we build in what was mentioned earlier, which is have more frequent check-ins on our legislative structure, if we're able to touch base about this item in particular, too, are we spending too much time or are we spending too little time? Is it affecting efficiency? Is equity a consideration that is that has come up in a real circumstance that we need, you know, so on and so forth? So if we can work that into our frequent check-ins on legislative structure, I think that would be smart.
Okay, so I think we're kind of coming down to a set of action items off of this, which is that we've provided all of this feedback on some of the problems that we were addressing. And maybe we've we've come up with some ways that would help bring study sessions in to solve some of these problems that we're addressing. We've provided some ways that would help bring committee structures toward a more ideal situation. And then potentially this third option that we need to explore, which is a hybrid model of both committees and study sessions or a similar concept there. And so what we're asking then the administration to bring back on February 15th is maybe a review of what those three options are. I would like to see some pros and cons or some concerns that the administration might have of each of those. I think it was really valuable to mention that the clerks and the legal team might have some feedback that we weren't able to hear in this meeting. And so we want to hear that set of feedback from the administration on any of those and then plan to have a conversation across council on those three options and whether there's more specific feedback or direction on which which one we're leaning toward on the February 15th meeting. Does that sound like what everybody else is coming to as well from this? Thumbs up, head nods, remove it in the right direction. See, we're already using the thumbs up model. So good. And we're going to get multiple touches on this topic. And so we're just already promoting all of those concepts. So I'm going to go back. This was kind of the last item on the council retreat. I just, before I move on to go to the order and public comment, any other final comments or feedback from the council on this? Going once, going twice. Okay. So last item on the agenda is always good of the order. Do we have anybody with comments for good of the order, anything to bring up? I am seeing type in Councilmember Hunt and then Councilmember Joe.
Thank you. Briefly, the Wire Eight Salmon Recovery Council had an item come up on short notice. So there is a there is a email to that effect. And it has to do with artificial light and a proposal to address artificial light on from homeowners who own docks, especially on Lake Smamish. So there's some information about that. It's more detail in the email. If you have any questions, please do let me know. And I wanted to flag that since it's come up very quickly. Thank you.
Fantastic. Councilmember Joe?
Could I share my screen if the, if that can be allowed?
I will have to check the clerks.
Yes, just give me one moment and you'll be able to.
So I was watching the football games this weekend and noticed that there was a local commercial for Ram trucks. And I happened to see in there, can you see that picture?
No, you're not sharing yet.
Okay. Hold on. I will. So this is from my email here, but this is a Ram truck commercial that ran. And it was highlighting Seattle, local action that was being taken and highlighting first responders. And it flies by really fast, but I caught a picture of it. It does feature Eastside Fire and Rescue and highlight right there on our on our station, right there on Sunset. And I just thought it was a cool thing that was out there. Wally told me that they filmed it about a year ago. And Eastside Fire and Rescue knew about it coming on to the TV in December. But I thought I'd share that as a positive highlight of our local firefighters. Thank you.
Indeed. Neat. Thanks for sharing. So last item on our agenda is public comment. And I know we've got a few members of the public. And I think I see Connie raising her hand again. I assume that's not from previous time. So I will ask the clerks if anyone has indicated desire to speak. And you may be on mute because I'm not hearing anything.
I only see Connie Marsh with her hand raised at this at this time.
Great. We would love to take comment. So if you can go ahead and move Connie up.
Okay, Connie, you've been made a panelist. You could, you can speak now.
Hi, this is Connie again. That was an exercise in patience. So council, one of the linkages for council committee meetings in the past was that they had some of the community commissions attached to them. So they were the liaisons for the community meetings, the community commissions. So we have different community commissions now, but they are sort of floating in space. They never sort of come back and connect in and connect with council and bounce off of council. It's more like they're administratively run. And so I would like to see those community commissions brought back to a council reporting format so that there is a better linkage there because I don't think there's much communication between the commission members and the council. And that was important in the past. Also, the ability for questions to be asked and answered in an informal situation is super important right now. The community often just speaks into a black hole and it gets dropped off. And then occasionally a council member will pick it up and reinforce that question. Now, I don't know if council members just don't realize that community comment does not get acted upon unless a council member picks it up, or if you conscientiously just let it drop because you don't want it to be discussed. But you do know that if you all don't repeat what the community says, then then administration is assuming that that is not supported. And so that is a clarification that I think needs to be formally addressed because I think that's just an informal thing that has happened over time. But if a community member is not used to that sort of concept and they speak at a meeting and nobody repeats it and then they never hear anything ever again, they will, in all likelihood, just never come back. And that's not what you want because you want the community to feel respected. But I don't think the rules are understood by a normal community person, right? It's like, okay, well, they just didn't give a bloopity hoop. And off I go and I'm never doing it again. So anyway, thanks for your thoughtful, though incredibly lengthy discussion. And I look forward to going to sleep now, as I'm sure you all do. Thank you very much. Bye.
Thank you, Connie. We do appreciate going to sleep after our long meetings. And I'm sure you do as well. So I'm hearing kind of two concepts out of that. And I think we'll, as it sounds like we need to do, is have a council member, you know, bring an idea back up and make sure it gets acted upon. So discussion on that. I guess we'll we'll make sure that, sorry, it's too late. My words are not coming out correctly. But yes, I hear it. Yes, we want to make sure we're addressing all of that. So, thank you, everyone. I think Councilmember Hunt, comment?
Well, thank you. I just wanted to reinforce the other part that I heard from from the comments we just heard from Connie, which is it would also be helpful to do if we if we go to a more complicated meeting structure with, for example, hybrid, where we have committees and study sessions, I think it will be valuable to think through how our commissions feed, the commissions' recommendations feed into that system. I do actually, now that it's, now that I'm thinking about it, I do remember thinking about how, when I was on Planning Policy Commission, how that mostly went to land and shore at the time. But I think it would be valuable to think through that and formalize it. And I think it helps then our commissions better understand their role in the system. And it could be more valuable for us if we had a defined way that we thought about how commissions feed into the system as well.
Sorry, I'm taking notes on all of this so that I can make sure to bring it all back up. But thank you, everybody, for a long, if productive, meeting. Deputy Council President Hall?
Just real quick, it looks like we might have another member of the public who's wishing to make public comment. I'm wondering if.
Oh, yeah, I do see Julian with his hand up. Good catch. Good catch there. Clerks, can we get Julian moved up and give him a chance to speak?
Yes, just one moment. Okay, Julian, I've made you a presenter. You should be able to speak now.
Okay. Good evening, council members. I just wanted to make a couple of comments about the committee structure. I think instead of introducing legislation at the committees, it'd be much more valuable to have it introduced at the full council sessions and then have like a referral source system where legislation is then referred to the smaller committees because it's kind of hard to track legislation as it within all these different committees. And it'll be useful to have it just at one central equation and then know where it's going after that. Another comment, I think also with the the community committees, it would be valuable to have more of a connection with the council in terms of the discussions and have more of a legislative role on those committees. So, yeah, that's all my comments.
Fantastic. Thanks, Julian. I'm noting all of this down so that we can make sure we work it all in. I've just completely gone off the rails. Let me just call out again, do we have any other community members who would like to make public comment? Anybody else? I think we're pretty good. I'm going to call that as three, three callouts and we're good. So I just want to thank everybody for the meeting. We will make sure that we bring this all back. And then we will see you next week on Tuesday for another study session as we talk over the work plan and open government training. And so I will call the meeting adjourned at 9:39 p.m. Thanks.